... Sit off. Test, one, two, three, four. Can you hear me? Okay. We can come to order, please. I appreciate it. We're journeying back from our closed session. We did not complete it. But was there a report that you'd like to add?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council's in closed session for two items this evening so far. Conference of legal property negotiator and conference of legal counsel regarding the fifth litigation.
Liz, I'm not picking you up.
Okay. Thanks. City of Galt versus Boys and Girls Club. There was no reportable action on either of those items. And the city council will be reconvening the closed session at the end of the meeting for items three and four on the agenda.
Okay. We will now open a special city council meeting.
Liz, I'm not getting much sound.
Okay, they're looking into it. I just went back and told them.
Okay, we'll open the meeting at seven oh one. If I could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Payne. Here, Claire.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a silent prayer and remain standing for the flag salute. And Chief, if I could ask you to do the flag salute when we're ready? Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get you. If we could have the video statement, please?
Okay, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast with an interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and or deletions tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to pull item D eight entirely.
Oh, okay, pull.
Award for Centurgal building demolition and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay.
I had a question on that, so maybe we can get that answered before the next meeting. I had a hard time finding the hazardous material certification for the subcontractor that was listed for asbestos removal. So can we just verify that he does have a current license? Thank you.
Any other items? None? Do we have any public comment?
Under Government Code, section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Okay. Anna, I'm sorry. Take a moment. Do you want to come up to the podium? Right up here. And just state your name if you could, please. Thank you.
Anna Ticonnen. For CAT construction. Okay, we would like to ask members to approve the contract for CAT construction for waterline replacement project for our lower spitters, two hundred ninety-seven thousand sixty dollars. And I don't know if you have any questions for us, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's on the consent calendar. Okay, Anna Lee, John Slatterback?
John Slatterack, I live in City of Galt. I'd like to start with a lighter note tonight. Al Baldwin said I shouldn't criticize so much, so I'm gonna start with a little lighter note. I'd just like to say that every member of council here I've agreed with one time or another. And so there's not one council member here that I haven't agreed with and not one council member that I've agreed with one hundred percent. Some of you actually surprised me with your knowledge on the subject and your favorable vote, favorable vote on that subject. But if you vote to change the general plan, you will have made the biggest mistake you will have ever made. Council knew what it was doing when it voted for and approved of the general plan. Now, because of developers' attorneys are here telling you it won't work, some on council are looking for an excuse, a reason, a justification to amend the general plan. You don't have to amend the general plan. You can still go through with the general plan and work on this later if you want. But don't, we've been too long on this general plan now to turn around and spend eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand dollars on the general plan to turn around and stop and do anything with it now. You've gotta go through with the general plan. I don't believe council will amend the general plan because I believe there are leaders on council who are intelligent and have the faculties of good judgment and know amending the general plan is not a good management. Council needs to get the general plan done. This city has been trying to get the general plan done for years. If you keep changing the general plan, the city will never finish what it started years ago. At the last council meeting, Al Baldwin stood at the podium and told us how much character and integrity this city has. I'm going to expect and hold every member of council accountable to those qualities. If any council member votes to amend the general plan, I will see to it, to it, the public knows what kind of character you truly have. You all said you would complete the general plan, and that's what I expect you to do. New subject. Claire gave a report about the low diest wastewater sewer increases, seven point three sewer rate increase. All I ask is, Claire or anybody, state the facts and not just pick and choose items from the report, items from a report that distort the facts and lead the public into believing all wastewater problems are caused by state mandated upgrades. If state mandates were the cause for all sewer rate increases, then all cities would have hundred dollar sewer rates. We know, or should know, mistakes are made, and when government makes mistakes, no one is ever held accountable. I can give you a list of this right here in Galt. And not necessarily staff, I'm talking about council. Four hundred thousand dollars for the Boys and Girls Club is the one that I can pick off the top. The fact is, seven point three percent increase in low di was spanned over four years period and take a three-bedroom home's monthly sewer bill from twenty-seven sixty-four to forty-eight dollars by July twenty-twelve. Galt's present sewer rate is fifty-one fifty-eight per month. Sewer rates in Galt are already three dollars and fifty-two percent, fifty-two, three dollars and fifty-two cents per month in excess of what low di sewer rates will be in twenty-twelve. And by twenty-twelve, who knows what Galt sewer rates will be? Low di's wastewater problems have been brewing for years, and it all started with complaints from farmers in the area about groundwater quality, and that got California Sports Fishing Protection Alliance, an advocate of fisheries, habitat, water quality involved in low di's wastewater problems. These concerns generate additional concerns from regional water control board. The point is, I've got more time than I realized I was gonna have, but the point is, if we discuss problems that increase sewer rate, let's use the facts and don't exaggerate and use some cities that have hundred dollar sewer rates. That should upset everybody in the city when we give examples that the facts are not there. There's a lot of facts here at low di's rates that I didn't get into because I didn't have time, but he only touched spots he wanted to make a point of. Let's tell the whole story when we're telling these. Thank you.
Mr. Slatterback.
Pamela Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pamela Sanchez. And CAT Construction did a very successful project for me, so I just wanted to let you know that. Was completed on time. We did a, they did, they pulled permits and did the work for me in City of Ponderstow on a private church parking lot. So I just wanted to testify that I was very satisfied and all of the people were satisfied. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kathleen Amos.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kathleen Amos, and I'm a member, a citizen of the city, live within the city limits. I'm here tonight for mostly regarding my role as a fireworks chair for the Galt Area Historical Society. I wanted to give a special thanks to Donald Haynes, Andrew Meredith, Liz Aguirre, and Randy Shelton for your efforts in the working in the fireworks booth for the historical society. Each one of you donated your time or found someone to do a shift, and I appreciate that very much. It was, it's very much appreciated in these hard economic times that we are able to continue to raise funds for the, to keep the Ray House Museum and the McFarland Ranch Living History Farm going for the sake of all the local children and youth. And so I really, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for doing that. Also, on another note, the youth master plan is moving forward. And, you know, I've been working on behalf of the high school with the elementary, people from the elementary district and also people from the city. And many of the youth have been involved in that planning process. And so it's, it's an exciting process, and I'm not sure, you know, where we're gonna end up, but I'm hopeful that we are gonna end up. And I'm excited about the fact that the city and the school districts are all working together in a positive manner for the sake of the children and youth of this community. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's how the speaker sheets are.
Well, the next item is the informational consent agenda calendar. And I'll ask Liz if you would read those off, please?
Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular council meetings of July twenty-one, two thousand nine. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, fund fifteen payback to fund fourteen. Number four, budget adjustments of measure R revenues in the amount of ninety-five thousand and adopt a resolution approving a supplemental appropriation. Number five, renewal of annual firearms range lease agreement with CDCR. Number six, Galt Joint Union School District MOU State After-School Education and Safety Grant. Number seven, defer placement of overhead utility underground along the south side of Livoke Avenue, fronting the Consolidated Fabricators Project. Number eight, the demolition project was pulled until next council meeting. And number nine, award of bid for the construction of the two thousand nine waterline replacement project, CIT number fifty-eight G.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments? If not, I'll ascertain a motion. Move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments? No? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Approved. Thank you. Next item?
Presentation of award for respect by the Galt Community of Character Coalition.
Do we have our good speaker coming forward?
Good evening. I'm Mary Martinez with the Galt Community of Character Coalition. And before I call up our honoree tonight, I'd like to remind everybody that for July and August, we're focusing on the character trait of pride and community. And we're currently accepting nominations for those awards because part of our mission as a community organization is to recognize individuals, families, and organizations that monitor the community of character traits that were selected by our Galt community. I'll put some nomination forms on the back, so if anybody would like to submit a nomination, the deadline for that is August tenth. But tonight, we're here to honor Jeremy Balukoff for the character trait of respect. So if I could have Jeremy come up? And I'd like to read the nomination that was submitted to our organization. "It is difficult for me to find a better living example of respect than Jeremy Balukoff. This superb young man embodies the principle of respect in a multitude of ways and is a role model for his peers in regard to this all-important virtue. Foremost, Jeremy has self-respect in spades. His commitment to upholding his own dignity and that of others is obvious when examining the quality of his relationships or the manner in which he handles challenges. He maintains high standards for his own personal conduct and establishes clear behavior guidelines for his friends and acquaintances. He consistently takes it upon himself to improve the behavior of his peers by challenging them to behave with respect and honor. When encountering insults, disagreements, or personal challenges, Jeremy seeks a decorous path that affirms both his goodness and the humanity of others. He is an example of sincere gratitude expressed through sterling manners and kind words. Again, he models this for his peers and has influenced others to express their gratitude more willingly and with greater consideration for others. For two years, I have been Jeremy's teacher and coach. I have been fortunate to witness this young man, time and again, live as a model of respect. He respects himself, has a deep care for the well-being of others, and will continue to serve as an example of the trait of respect for all with whom he comes in contact. I am very proud to nominate Jeremy Balukoff for the Galt Community of Characters Respect Award, and this was submitted by his teacher, Dane White, from Galt High School. Congratulations."
Next item, ordinances. Proposed ordinance amending chapter three point oh four of the Galt Municipal Code pertaining to charges for processing bad checks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Recently, the Finance Department was notified that the charge for a bank fee for a return check was going to be increased. And as a result, we did an analysis to review the total cost of processing return check inclusive of staff time and materials. It was determined that the current costs are approximately thirty-five dollars. The city's fee for a return check was set in nineteen ninety-four at thirty dollars. Government code allows, the public agencies may charge a reasonable amount to recover costs associated with return checks. Staff is recommending that the fee be increased to cover the city's costs to thirty-five dollars. In addition, it's recommended that the code be amended to allow council to approve an increase to the fee in the future as necessary by resolution. If you have any questions, you can answer them.
I do. What is the bank charging us for a return check?
It's eight dollars from the bank.
They're charging us eight dollars? And you're telling me that it takes us twenty-seven dollars worth of manpower to handle that reverse, to handle the NSF, non-sufficient fund check, is what you're telling me, for a single check, per check?
Right. When the checks come in and we have to do a letter to the customer.
Sure.
Process it in the computer system. That all has to be reviewed by supervisor. Then there's the cost of the supplies and postage, and then following up on them is the real chore, actually, I'm considering.
Are letters not templated? Do we not have a template?
No, there's a template. There's a template. But there's different types of return checks. There's return checks from the market.
Right.
You know, so there's several different return check templates, actually.
And what do you think the average check is? What do you think the amount of the average check is, just out of curiosity?
The majority of the checks are for utilities. And so they're two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars usually.
Okay. I have a real issue with the cost, to be honest with you. And I'm not part of the cost analysis. I don't have it in front of me, to be frankly honest with you. But one of the biggest complaints out there, especially with the public, not just with raising these NSF fees by the board or by, excuse me, by the council, but because of the gouging of the banks and other financial institutions and even in some cases municipalities much like ourselves, I'm not comfortable in these times in raising that price. I think that the cost of thirty dollars for non-sufficient fund check is reasonable for the eight dollars that we pay the bank. And I understand, you know, again, I mean, the cost analysis, you know, I'm not gonna go over whether or not I think it's accurate or not. And I think you did a great job, and I think you probably did what you believed was right, and I appreciate the staff's efforts. It's not something that I could support at this time because I just don't think it's reasonable. So, and I'd read through this and I'd thought about it, so I just wanna put that out there. Perhaps other people may have comments or concerns, I don't know.
I would just say that in the future, if we're gonna talk about cost analysis in our, in our actual memo to council that we put in the agenda, I think it's important that staff breaks it down on a line-by-line basis so we can see where you're coming from. Because I share the same sentiments as Councilmember Haynes. I don't understand how we're spending twenty-seven dollars to deal with one return check. You've got a template, we've already established that. We're talking follow-up phone calls, letters, it just, it doesn't seem like something that would warrant twenty-seven dollars. Now, that might not be the case. You might be absolutely correct in your, in your cost analysis, but I think it's important for us to see that on a line-by-line basis in order to draw the same conclusion.
Barbara? I'm sorry, City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, one option available for the council is what you have before you this evening is an ordinance which requires two readings and the resolution. So one option would be for the council to entertain the introduction of the ordinance with first reading, defer action on the resolution to give staff an opportunity to bring back the information that the council was looking for. And then you could consider that resolution at the, at the second reading of the ordinance and set the rate at the level you think appropriate.
And then that way, we'd have the complete breakdown. If, the review. Comments from other council members?
I have a concern also. If we're only being charged eight, I think, I'm sure that, pretty sure that you can justify it, but I think it's important, the image that we project to the citizens as well, I think that should be a consideration. If the bank is charging them eight dollars and we're looking at thirty, I think it doesn't project the image that we want, that we care about our citizens. I'll be glad to see what the cost breakdown is and certainly take that into consideration.
Well, just one thing to keep in mind, if the costs are thirty-five dollars, which I believe they are, and the citizens who are creating the expense aren't paying it, then that falls by default to the other citizens to pay. So I think that's an important thing to consider, that, you know, people that are writing the checks that are non-sufficient funds are the ones that are causing the added expense, and they're the ones who are bearing that expense if we charge the appropriate amount for the return check fee. So that's just a consideration.
And it's a good point.
Got a comment from, I think, City Manager?
I know this is tough, but if people were honest and they hand you a check and there's supposed to be money there, then we wouldn't have the problem if people bounced checks. And that's an issue that we should handle, and I'm with Michelle, if there's a bounced check and we have to go through the time and the effort to collect it, plus the interest we lose, plus what we use the money for, it's not fair to those individuals who honestly pay their bill and don't bounce their check.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Ted, but it's a matter of what's reasonable. I'll put things in perspective. Their check, utility bills are two hundred dollars, and we're charging them thirty or thirty-five. Their bank is surely charging them twenty-five to fifty. I don't know what the cost is these days, I've never bounced a check. But I do have to believe that nobody would truly intentionally do that without some intention, some good intention of making good of the, on the payment. I have no problem with getting, taking a look at the cost analysis, which you think it is. I'm not really clear on the sophistication of our system, but maybe you could clear up a couple of things for me. The process in which a return check comes back, they come in bulk? In other words, the bank, do you get them weekly, daily?
Daily.
You get them daily, okay. So when the clerk gets them, they go into the system? I just kinda run through the process to get it in my head. They run, when they go into the system, they have to retract the payment, reverse it, write into the system. Does the system automatically, at that point, when you mark it in there and you put in the reason as a non-sufficient fund, does it automatically send a letter out? Or do they have to do that manually?
It's semi-automated, but we do also have to review them. For instance, if a check comes through from one person who's paying for someone else's account, the system automatically puts the letter to the person who is the account holder. So then we'll have to type another account. It's the manual processes associated with the automation that tend to take us a little bit more time to follow through with, but we do need to follow through on reviewing that and make sure that we're notifying all the proper people.
I'll give you an example. When I was in finance, I had a clerk, it was an office manager. And we, quite often, would get non-sufficient fund checks, and we'd get them also on a daily basis. And what she would do is she also did the manual issue, go into the system, reverse the payment, and automatically she would go in and kick out a, a letter the same day. Now, I could sit down and I probably could see her do this in less than five minutes. So I'm trying to visualize what the cost is when we go from an eight-dollar charge of the bank to thirty-five dollars. So I'm just kinda, maybe you could help me out there a little bit?
Well, actually, I did take the analysis that was done in nineteen ninety-four, and I did, believe it or not, reduce the timeframes because we have automated some of the processes. But the problem is that they don't, not all return checks go through the same process. As I mentioned, some are for utilities, that's most of them.
Sure.
Some are for the market, so that goes through a different process. The market has to be notified so that they can notify the vendor and prevent the vendor from continuing to occupy the space till they make good on the check. Some are for accounts receivable for other bills that the city issues, and those go through a different process. So it's not as streamlined as I would like to see it, but because of the different areas that we're talking about, you know, we've automated it to the best of our ability at this point, and I have cut some timeframes from the previous analysis that was done. Unfortunately, the cost that, you know, the hourly rate when you burden payroll rates and you talk about how much time we're spending, not just line staff, but supervisors as well, when you're making copies and you're entering it into the system and then you're following up and mailing and, you know, dealing with the people when they call to discuss the return check, there's a, there's quite a bit to it most times. So, you know, we did that best estimate that we could because we wanted the city to be able to recover its costs.
Well, maybe the cost analysis can clear up a few of the questions that I have.
Just for comparison purposes, if they, let's say a developer doesn't pay a certain fee to the city and we send them to collections, what do we typically charge for that?
We charge to the developer?
Yeah.
If we send them to collection, that's an entirely different process than a return check. And actually, if the city has to send something to collections, we actually receive less than the amount that they owe us because the collection agency takes a percentage.
Okay. Thank you. Carol, did you have any comments? I don't wanna exclude you.
No, I, I support what staff's recommending, but I also go along with it, like to see the further breakout of it. But I can imagine the difficulties it's caused by having to deal with the- deal with the situation at all. I know where Dawn works, I suspect if I had paid my state taxes with a check that bounced, I wouldn't just have a bad check fee, I'd probably have a fine and interest. I know on our taxes for our income, I think the interest is five percent, I think, on the overdue payment, so I think what we're asking is reasonable.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can I add a comment, if I may?
Sure.
Okay. What we're looking at here, if truly you just look at the numbers, is simply a ten percent increase in a person writing a bad check from nineteen ninety-four to now, and that's a period of fifteen years. If you look at, we had, we've been charging thirty dollars, and the cost from the bank was six, so that's a difference of twenty-four dollars. The bank's now charging eight dollars, so Finance Department is asking for an increase to thirty-five dollars. So, that's a, and technically, it's a net of three dollars is what we're asking for here. And if you, and three dollars is obviously ten percent of what we're talking about. So, we're looking at from nineteen ninety-four to now, which is a period of fifteen years, an increase of ten percent. Staff salaries, I'm sure, if we look through history, in the finance area, has increased probably more than ten percent within that time period. So, as I said, just, if you just look at only the numbers, I mean, it's your final decision, decide, you know, whatever you want to do, but if you just look at the numbers, that is all that's being requested here, is simply a ten percent increase in bad check charges.
I think we understand what we're asking for, but the problem is, I think the public wants to see that we're not just raising rates or raising fees to cover deficiencies within our own budget. And if you don't have a line-by-line breakdown in the agenda packet, people can draw that conclusion.
I understand. Yeah. Okay, well, how about this, then? I think we're all kind of in agreeance, and I kind of concur with all of you, that I'd like to see that, so as a compromise, and I think we're all going in the same direction. Our attorney kind of said, you know, waive the first reading, but before this comes back for the final, that, I think the term you both used, Dawn, too, is the cost analysis. So, we could have that, we could further discuss it and make that final decision.
I don't want to ask Michelle to have too much work, but I think-
Sure.
Besides what it would cost for an individual check, I think it would be important for the council, she'd go back and pick a year and show how much in total it costs us for bad checks and that type of issue on a yearly basis.
Okay. Maybe we could have staff do that, too. Okay? So, you want direction, or you need a motion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if there's, after you take public comment, then I'd recommend you entertain a motion to move to introduce the ordinance and waive first reading.
Okay. All right. Public comment? Come forward.
Gene Davenport, City of Galt. The problem I see with this, raising this to thirty-five, you know, you can throw the numbers out you want, you can equate it to what we did from nineteen ninety-four to now, it's a three percent increase or whatever. The bottom line, I see a couple of things that were brought up, that nobody hit on. I don't understand why a supervisor's got to get involved every time. You have a department that's supposed to take care of this. Why do you need a supervisor overseeing everything every day? That's just a waste of money. Two, if you have an issue that pertains to the flea market, as compared to the city's problems with collecting on the utility bills, I think those are two distinct differences. And the amounts of monies are probably different. And so, your collection process is probably different. So, I would look at, I would request you guys look at that, too, because a lot of times, if people, I couldn't disagree with you more, Ted, in what you said, as much respect as I have for you, because if somebody writes a check, if a mother has to take her kid to the hospital and doesn't foresee this cost in this economy, they're going to be short on a check that they already wrote, maybe. What's more important, their electricity or their kid? I mean, you have to look at the big picture. And I'm just saying, take these things into consideration, because nobody's brought those things up. These are, this is just a bad time to be looking at this. I think it should be tabled and brought up again next year, maybe, when things are looking maybe better. But I just think that thirty-five dollars, in my opinion, because at my business, our bank charges us seven dollars. If that's what it is, you go back to your bank, say, if you can't lower this back down to seven, we're going to look someplace else. I mean, why do we have to do business with that bank? There's a lot of things you should be bringing up rather than just the cost, and I just think thirty-five dollars is a little on the high side.
Gene, yeah, and Gene, just for the record, I had thought that through in my head, but I hope in the cost analysis, if we get a breakdown, it will tell us where the cost goes. So, your questions, your concerns are well taken, and I want you to know that I was thinking about it. But until we have the cost analysis, you know what I'm saying, we don't know what percentage that's included in.
Ted?
I'm not going to disagree with him. If somebody has a problem and they're hurting, I understand that, but the right thing to do is say, come in and say, "Look, I have a problem, I have to make a decision. Do I pay you, or do I take care of my kid? Can we sit down and work something out?" Instead of walking in and handing a check and knowingly, knowing that that's going to bounce. You know, I mean, I don't know, I don't think there's anyone in finance that wouldn't try and work something out, or get a payment schedule, or whatever else, but if you get a ton of these checks that people are just bouncing and knowingly doing it, that's fraud.
Well, I don't want to get into a debate about it, but it almost sounds like we're looking more to punish them than to recover the cost. But I'm not going to get into debate, I just pointed that out.
But there's no punishment.
Okay.
You've used, now, hang on, you've used the service, let me see what's interesting, you're going to hear my pitch on it. A city is the only place that you can go and use the service before you pay for it. If I go to the grocery store, they don't let me out of that store until I pay for it. The city allows people to use water and sewer and service and pay for it later. We're the only entity that I know that actually does that.
Well, restaurants, when you go to a restaurant and you sit down and eat your food, Ted, before-
They don't let you out, but you pay, though.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Okay.
I'll attain a motion, then. Is there a motion?
Okay. I'll try. I move that we pass the ordinance. Is that what the wording?
I'd recommend you entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, introduce the ordinance.
Commending Chapter three point four zero of the municipal code, and waive first reading, and continue the resolution to the following meeting.
That would be my motion.
And I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments?
In addition, Steve, does she also have to put it under the contingency that, based on the cost analysis that comes forward in the next reading?
Um, no, the resolution would come back for your consideration at the next meeting.
Right.
And then based upon the information presented at that meeting, the council could decide whether to adopt the resolution as presented, or modify it, or not adopt it.
Okay. No further discussion, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 No. Aye. Thank you. Next item?
Okay. The Treasurer's Report for the period ending June two thousand nine.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. In front of you, you have the Treasurer's Report for June two thousand nine, and I just want to say that as I was walking into Council Chamber Saturday night, Councilmember Payne just asked me, you know, "How is the city's money?" And my response was, "It's safe." And I also followed that up with, "It's not earning a lot of money, but it's safe." And I think that's the key point that I need to make to the citizens here, and that is, the very first and foremost priority is that the money is safe, and that, no, we're not earning a whole lot of interest, and I'll be honest, neither is anyone else. The weighted average yield for the month of June is one point eight percent on our portfolio. And if you look at rates, that's actually about, that's actually slightly higher than what the normal rate is. But I do want to also mention tonight, something that I invested in January were what I call non-local certificates of deposit. These are CDs that I purchased through a broker, which I've done before a few years ago, and that is, I purchased CDs ranging anywhere between nine months to two years, getting different yields on them, and also adhering to the FDIC rules that were in place at the time. If you remember, back in January of this year, there was a rule that FDIC would allow or honor two hundred and fifty thousand dollars all the way through the end of two thousand nine. Well, since that, and this goes for not only the city, but also for, you know, John and Mary public, and that is, FDIC is now offering that same two hundred and fifty thousand dollars all the way through the year two thousand thirteen. So, that's now available, and I want to make sure everyone understands that. So, that's, and I wanted to make sure and keep under those FDIC rules, because, you know, there's some banks, to be honest, that I had never heard of. I did do a little research, of course, before I invested in them, but Bitterroot Valley Bank in low, low Montana, never heard of them, okay? But we have a hundred thousand dollars with them. There is also First Bank of Puerto Rico. Yes, I did research that FDIC covers Puerto Rico. I didn't know that before, but they do. So, I just wanted to talk about non-local CDs. Also, this is the one time a year when I always say what the fiscal year-to-date interest that was earned for the oh-eight, oh-nine year, and that was, the total this year is one million, four hundred seventy thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents. So, that's the amount of interest that was earned. It, there's been higher years as far as amount of interest earned, and there's also been lower years. So, it's, you know, it's right in the pack. So, with that, I ask that you approve the Treasurer's Report as of June two thousand nine, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Sean, yeah, Sean, one point eight oh, is that an all-time low for us? For yield on our financial?
Yes.
I mean, that just seems the lowest I've ever seen it, and I don't know of any other time that we could, I could imagine it being lower than that.
It has, well, in what I can recall, I do not remember interest rates this low in history. I mean, that's, you know, I'm fifty years old now, okay? And I'll tell you, one point eight zero, it will get lower. I'm not going to fool you about that, and I'll tell you why. Because the State of California Life Funds is going to be somewhere around one percent in months to come.
You think it will drop that low?
It's going to drop that low, yes. And it's, I'm progressively moving money out of there, obviously, to try to find a little bit higher yield. You've got to remember that, you know, the safety, of course, comes first, but what I'm doing is trying to buy agencies that pay, say, two percent or more. And if you notice on page two of your report, I've purchased what are called callable securities, but I have to go out to a period of five years in order to find a higher yield. So, what I'm buying, then, is what are called one-time call step-ups, which, in other words, it's called a five-year, say, a two-year, one-time call step-up. And what happens is, that bondholder, Fannie Mae in this case, in two years, they can call that bond, okay? Well, if they do call the bond, that's fine, that's their prerogative. Between now and then, we earn two percent. If they do not call the bond, then it steps up to an interest rate of four percent, okay? Again, not a lot, but those are the only things that are available on the marketplace at that rate.
Even at two percent, that's a lot better than one percent we're facing with the state life funds, right?
I agree. But you also don't want to put everything into five-year instruments, because then you have no liquidity in the years, you know, two through four.
I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're following up with that, because we've got almost twenty-seven million dollars invested out there.
I know.
That'd be a little bit, that's quite a drop in revenue, because that's forty-three point six-two percent of our portfolio.
Yeah. I completely agree. Now, just this last month, July, we did purchase another local CD of one million dollars in with Premier West Bank. And then I'm looking for, you know, other opportunities, but again, I have, you know, I need to follow that criteria of safety first.
Absolutely.
So-
Well, I appreciate all the hard work you've done, I think you did an outstanding job-
Well, thank you.
-collecting our money.
Well, again, as I told Councilmember Payne, it's safe, it's not earning a lot, but it's safe.
And that's important to us.
Yeah, I follow the rates every day, so, looking for opportunity. Okay? Any other comments or questions? No?
Nope.
I'll make a motion, we accept the report, Mr. Sean?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. No further comments, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Thank you. Thanks. Good job.
Next item, foreclosure proceedings for Community Facilities District nineteen eighty-eight dash one.
In December of two thousand five, the city refunded the nineteen eighty-eight dash one CFD bonds. These bonds issued to fund public improvements in the northeast area of Galt are repaid through a collection of special taxes levied through the County of Sacramento. For bond covenants agreed to by the city at the time the bonds were issued, the city must review the delinquencies at June thirtieth of each year and determine if foreclosure is required based on the criteria set forth. The first criteria is a delinquency ratio of over five percent and a reserve fund balance less than the required amount. Although the delinquency ratio is above five percent at six point two one percent, the reserve fund is intact and therefore this first criteria has not been met. The second criteria relating to the property owner's delinquent in excess of five thousand dollars has been met. There are five property owners meeting this criteria. Staff is recommending that council approve the resolution initiating foreclosure proceedings on these five property owners. It should be noted this year, staff will be exercising the option with NBS, our district administrator, to send pre-foreclosure letters to these property owners prior to sending the delinquencies to the city's foreclosure attorney. It is hoped that this step will help property owners resolve their delinquencies prior to incurring additional legal costs. The process will allow property owners an additional thirty days to admit payment on the delinquency, with the potential to save approximately two hundred and fifty dollars in legal fees as well. This concludes my report, I'll be happy to address any questions you might have.
I don't have a question for you, but a question for staff in the City Manager's office. The Walnut Center's project is listed under this, does this mean that that project is essentially dead, the fact that they're going into foreclosure on there?
It will, if foreclosure's completed, they've indicated there are going to be some other things.
Yeah, essentially, the theater project that they once envisioned with the shopping center and everything is dead, they're looking at doing other things with the property, and I'm not privileged to know what the status of their, all of their dealings are, but we've met with them recently, within the last month or two, we've talked to them about the possibility of locating the theater specifically on a different commercial property within the city, because the owners of the property are not the theater owners. The developers own the property, and they're friends with the people that own the movie theater, so we've had some discussions with them about possibly moving that. I'm not aware of, you know, the financial status of their operation, but they've essentially told us that that shopping center project is dead, that they are looking at other alternatives that we're supposed to be meeting with them about within the next month, and then whatever they come up with, we may be back to the council for some discussion on that in the future.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just curious, are you allowed to tell us where this property is located? Because this one person, Mr. Fisher-
I don't.
-has a whole list of them. Just wondering where it's located.
Well, the parcel numbers are public information. Off the top of my head, I don't know what those addresses are, but I'm sure we get that information for you.
Have you received any response back, or have you not sent?
No, we haven't. Once council approves this, then we go to the county and strip the parcels from the tax rolls. At that point, we'll be sending out the pre-foreclosure letters. What's happened up to this point is the county has been proceeding with collections, so they've sent them their letters, and up until this point, we have not received payments.
And I think I recall that something came up last year with a citizen that said he never received the notice, and I thought we changed our policy where we were going to require a signature or something of-
Well, we're making sure that they all go out certified, but in addition to that, this year, before we send them to the attorney to do that, we're going to send them out certified mail pre-foreclosure letters, which is basically a last chance, clear the set before we turn it over to the attorney and you incur legal fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments by council?
What happens if they're already in foreclosure? What if their first mortgage or second mortgage is foreclosing on the property? Do you check to see if that's the case?
I personally would not do that, but our foreclosure attorney, I'm sure, would investigate the status of the property if it got to that point.
So, because you can just lean the property and put your tax on there and then not have to go through the process if somebody else is already doing the foreclosure in order to get your taxes, right?
Yeah, I don't know all of the legal procedures that the foreclosure attorney follows, but I do know that he'll send letters out after we send the pre-foreclosure letters.
That I'm sure.
And he will, if, if there's no response, then he'll do further legal research to see what the status is.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Item?
Phase one residential water meter implementation.
We've gotta do the other foreclosure proceeding.
Foreclosure proceedings for nineteen ninety-one reassessment district, sorry.
Thank you. In May of nineteen ninety-nine, the city refunded the nineteen ninety-two dash one assessment district bonds. These bonds issued to fund public improvements within the district are repaid through a collection of assessments levied through the county of Sacramento. Per bond covenants agreed to by the city at the time the bonds were issued, the city must review the delinquencies at June thirtieth of each year and determine if foreclosure is required based on the criteria set forth. If there is a delinquency ratio of over five percent and a reserve fund balance less than the required amount, foreclosure proceedings are required. Although the delinquency ratio is above five percent at twenty-four point two one percent, the reserve fund is currently intact and therefore the criteria for mandatory foreclosure has not been met. Nonetheless, in order to ensure that the reserve fund remains intact, staff is recommending that council approve the resolution initiating foreclosure proceedings on all delinquent property owners within the district. Again, staff will be exercising the option with NBS, our district administrator, to send pre-foreclosure letters to these property owners prior to sending the delinquencies to the city's foreclosure attorney to begin proceedings. It is hoped that this step will help property owners resolve these delinquencies prior to incurring additional costs. This property, this process will allow property owners an additional thirty days to admit payment, and there is a potential savings of approximately two hundred and fifty dollars in legal fees. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on this district.
Questions or comments from council?
I'll have it.
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, now, we go to phase one residential water meter implementation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor members of the council. The next item before you is a recommendation for award of a contract to HDR Engineering for engineering services for procurement documents and implementation assistance for the water meter phase one project. Back in December of last year, the council accepted the water meter implementation plan prepared by HDR and directed staff to proceed with the phase one implementation. Uh, phase one, if you recall, included all non-metered residences constructed after nineteen ninety-two, residents constructed between ninety and ninety-two that had a meter deposit, and select residents for geographical infill. We also have about four hundred meters that we're gonna convert to the newest technology. All in all, we have about thirty-six hundred new meters, about seven hundred conversions. Uh, based upon the implementation plan, HDR recommended that we look at both mobile drive-by radio read and fixed network radio read as both being economically viable alternatives. Uh, we originally intended to take the HDR recommendation and prepare the procurement documents in-house, however, due to the specialized nature of the work, the complexity of the technology between the two options, and our current workload, we've since realized the benefits and need for some technical assistance. Because HDR was familiar with our needs, having done the implementation plan, we asked them for a proposal to provide this technical assistance. Uh, although most probably works projects like this are working the basis of strictly low bid, this would be done a little bit differently because of the differences in the technologies and the differences in what we get out of the product. It will be a combination of a initial capital cost, the twenty-year life cycle cost, the qualification, the experience of the firm, both of the technology provider and the con- installation contractor, and the technology itself. This way, we can look at a twenty-year life cycle and compare the differences between the drive-by and the fixed network. We understand that the fixed net will, will be a little bit more expensive, but it provides a lot more benefits to both the city and perhaps to our customers. If we ever want to go to, uh, monthly meter reading, we can get that instantaneously as opposed to doubling our labor cost. We don't know if that's gonna be an option or not in the future. They originally estimated a fee of about ninety thousand dollars for the work. We've negotiated a fee of fifty thousand on not to exceed basis. We reviewed the final scope of proposed fee, the copy's included in your package. Uh, the proposed fee equals about three point eight percent of the estimated cost for the improvements. Uh, typical costs vary from seven to twelve, so we really got them down as a very, a very cheap and expensive fee for the work that they're doing. The total cost for the phase one improvements is about one point three six million dollars. Uh, their fee, again, is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Um, I do wanna run the council that it was our intent back in December when we announced the rates, that we were estimating a nine percent rate would be nee- increase would be needed when we implemented the water meters. At that time, staff's recommendation was to roll the rates back, increase back to four point one percent, and council only authorized a three percent. Which our intent, along with implementation sometime in the fall, October, November, to bring back the new rate structure for council's approval, to have it implemented by January first. Um, we recommend that council authorize city manager to award the contract as presented.
Comments from council?
I was wondering, and maybe you covered this in the past, the fixed network radio read, have we checked with other jurisdictions to see how successful that is?
Uh, the con- the consultant has, um, it is a much newer technology, so they are experiencing more problems with that than the, the drive-by. The drive-by technology is, is proven substantial technology. Um, also, SMMUD and PG&E have been doing some of the same thing, so, uh, we expect a few more bugs with that, um, but every day, that technology gets better. It's been a, quite a mix of the agencies that have been doing the implementation, depends a lot on the particulars of the agency. Some of them are going with latest, greatest technology, which is the fixed network, just because it is latest, greatest, they don't care what the costs are. Others are deferring more to the cost, saying, you'd rather have all the bells and whistles, but we just don't wanna spend an extra penny. So, they're going with the fixed net, uh, excuse me, the drive-by. And that's the lowest capital cost now, even though they may have ultimately long-term more cost. For Galt, for twenty years, the fixed network is still a little bit more expensive over a twenty-year life cycle. We're at the twenty-five year before we start seeing a positive return. But that's not including a cost factor for all the intangibles of being able to log on and see your usage. You can see how long your, your kid's taking a shower, how much, you see the pennies tick off. Or, like I said, being able to go to a, a months of, once a month meter read. If we have fixed network, it's a simple download. If we want to do that with the, the drive-by, then we have to go out and physically drive all the streets a second time and incur that additional cost. It just, it varies based on the philosophy of the agency. That's one of the reasons why we're looking at bidding both technologies to be able to do a real head-to-head comparison.
Thank you.
Rick, last time we talked about this, and we may have just been specifically talking about the fixed network radio system, I'm unsure, I don't recall it. But in either case, down here, we're talking about customer service, maintenance, staff related, increased number of metered accounts. Staff anticipates bringing these staffing requests to the council for consideration warranted. Costs for additional staffing have been included in the cost estimates and proposed rates previously provided. Last time we talked about this, I'd asked, and I think it was, I miss, uh, she's not here tonight, but I had asked because the system was so automated, that if, when the information was dumped, if the billings would be automatic. Is that still the case? In other words, if the meters are automatically read, they go through, or whatever the case is, it's uploaded into our system, it's, and then automatically statements should be ran out, right? Is that the, is that not the case?
Well, I'm not familiar with the exact billing technol- it's one of the things that we're gonna be looking at with the technology of how the new system integrates into our software. Depending upon what, what we buy, the system could give us a separate tape that would, somebody that has to manually put into our accounting software, or we could get a, a software that is going to be a direct download. It's our intent to automate the process as much as we possibly can.
Um, uh, I think I can answer part of your question. The biggest cost for finance is not the actual billing process associated with this, it's the time, when we, regardless of what technology we choose, whether it's drive-by, or whether it's the, uh, it's the fixed network.
Right.
There's gonna be a significant increase in the number of calls that we receive on any kind of metered system. Right now, if you have, most of our customers are flat rate.
Right.
There's no question in the charge.
Right.
You know exactly what it is, it's flat. Once you start charging for usage...
Yes.
People are gonna be calling, how, why is my bill so high?
Right.
You know, so that's, the number of calls that we get, we have about, I think, four hundred metered accounts right now, the number of calls we get on those few accounts quadrupled the amount we get on all the other... So, what happens now, if you take those four hundred and you multiply it by several thousand, right? Now, you have many, many more phone calls from people on those metered accounts. So, it's not necessarily the technology that's driving your, your, your workload increase, it's the number of people that are gonna be calling with issues on the fact that they're being metered now. I mean, you, you've probably called the, your, your, uh, electric utility before, why is my electric utility so, you know, so high? And they get to go back, and you research different things, and, you know, it's just typical with any kind of metered system, there's gonna be a lot more questions about why people's bills are so high.
Well, all right, I was just looking at the additional costs for staffing, I, I just, you know...
It'll also have to be, for example, move-in, move-out, when someone shuts off service, we're gonna have to go out and do an end-read bill. We don't have to do that right now. That's a whole new system, we're gonna have to, we'll have to do a startup bill when someone starts their service. Whether it's a read or a, a direct read, there's gonna have to be an additional download, because if the, when the someone starts, they don't all move into the new homes and turn on service the first day of the month. So, there is, and that may take five minutes. But over the whole course of all the residences, there'll be a lot of disruptions, there's gonna be people calling, my meter isn't working, or other things, and, uh, potentially more shut-offs, and that's, that's the cost we're talking about. There is some increase, but well, obviously, between a drive-by or a fixed network, we save the staff cost of having to drive around, face four hours a month to pick up all the, um, reads. Depending on the technology, we may get, save some money, have smaller transducers that takes eight hours to drive around to pick up the whole city. Those are the things we're gonna take and worry about in the bid.
My concern is that with this type of technology and for the costs and, and the expense of the city, is my anticipation or expectations is such as that the overall cost for the average citizen throughout Galt should go down. That's what my anticipation or expectations would be.
No, that's not correct.
So, correct me then, but, so what you're telling me with this technology, and, well, not for everybody, I'm not saying everybody, for some, it should, ultimately, it should go down.
No, that's not correct.
Right, so, it depends on usage is my, yeah, I understand it depends on usage, but you've got a lot of seniors in this community, and I would expect that their costs would go down as a result of this, so you tell me that's not going to be the case?
I, I don't believe so. There is, regardless of how we do that, there is the cost of the technology itself.
Right.
Particularly with the fixed network. The, the individual home share of that technology, that is a, a significant additional cost relative to the water, so it'd have to be a significant decrease in the usage of water to compensate for that share of the technology. That's one of the reasons why staff is looking at coming back with an offsetting rate to try to adjust for that. So, we have a, a higher fixed rate, a base rate, and maybe change in the actual rate consumption, so we have a stabilization of those rates. If we maintain the current system and somebody was using a significant amount of water and then went to almost nothing, then it's, it's possible. But I think you're gonna end up with the majority of people, because of the technology cost, paying more. It's something we don't have to deal with right now. It's just, all the additional costs of meters, the maintenance of the meters themselves, are all gonna add costs, and I would like to say that, that everybody's gonna be paying less. They will, we, actually paying though for what they use. There's a lot of, you know, people saying, well, it's not fair, I'm not using, I'm not paying, I'm paying the same thing and I'm not using as much as my neighbor, but they will only be paying for what they use.
Okay.
Um, I was wondering, in these mobile home parks, do they each, each space have their own meter, or do they pay one fee, and then how would...
To my understanding, they're all master metered.
They are.
Where the property owner, whoever owns the park pays the bill, and they would then pass that on to their, uh, tenants based upon whatever lease agreements they have, whether they charge separately for the water, or maybe just be included with the, with the rent. And so, that's one of the things that, if we come back with a new rate structure, we would then have to devise, we could end up setting some other type of rate, but we have to charge that owner based on the actual usage. And it'd be their responsibility to pass that on to their tenants.
That would be their problem, how they calculated it.
That would be their choice, yes.
Isn't that the current practice, I mean, aren't those mobile home parks currently metered?
Um...
My understanding is they are metered.
So, with, this isn't gonna change anything with the mobile home parks?
Master metered, yeah.
They all are.
Not individually, but master metered.
Most of them have the master meter, they're already...
I think you are, you are in fact, correct.
I think we had a couple of people from the audience that had their hand up, so, we'll allow them to, you can...
Make sure that's the right finger up there, didn't you?
Uh, my, my gut to General Park Company. Just an example, I live in Elk Grove, and so I thought I would, uh, uh, I had a base rate at a hundred and thirty-two dollars, so I thought, okay, that's a lot of money. So, I said, well, I'm gonna get a meter. I got a meter, the next month was two hundred and fifty-five dollars, so...
So, it's...
It goes to show, but I will say, during the winter time, it was sixty-seven dollars, so, you know, it, they, but the two hundred and fifty-five was sort of a shocker right out of the gate. So, but what they did in Elk Grove, they had a thing set up where the, where the, uh, staff came around, and they gave you a little packet and, and, uh, checked, they checked, ba- basically, see if there was any leaks and so on. So, that was pretty nice. They, they took time to do that, and they put out a fo- a, a folder, and so on, so, uh, and, and they, and they, and they checked, and I did have a couple of leaks that I should've had taken care of. So, uh, but anyway, yeah, it was, uh, it was a shocker.
Did you pay for that meter yourself?
Uh, no, I didn't, uh, Elk Grove Water paid for it.
Okay. Uh, I was gonna say, if you had it, it'd be like adding insult to injury, so...
Yeah, well, it's a good point about the winter versus the summer. One of the things we're trying to do is get these meters in the winter time so that the bills will be lower, the first couple of bills will be lower, before they get the shock of the summer, which is typically, typically when the water usage goes way up because of all the irrigation.
Pool and spas. Was there another comment, uh, was, Mr. Davenport, did you have a comment? I guess he didn't. No. Okay, oh, okay, okay. All right, well, direction from council, if there's, unless there's other questions? Daryl, do you have any comments?
No, it's the next step in this, uh, process, it's been lengthy and one that, uh, was again mandated down from the state.
Sure. Okay, is there a motion on the floor? Motion been made, seconded?
I'll second.
And seconded. No further comments or questions, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. We will adjourn and to the redevelopment agency, if I could have the roll call, please.
Board members Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
Huh? But we have one item, information consent agenda, if I could have you read those, please.
Sure, I have, uh, approval of the minutes of the meeting of July twenty-first, two thousand nine, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants, and approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending June two thousand nine.
Are there any comments or questions? If not, move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, none, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City Clerk's report?
Oh, I see, I just got out of my...
Sorry.
Document accidentally. Um, so, the League of California Cities Meeting will be held in San Jose this year, uh, from September sixteenth through the eighteenth, I hope.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe the, um, the board meeting is on the eighteenth, where the decisions are made. At this point, um, I ask for council to designate a voting member and alternate if possible, and we will, um, inform the League of your decision.
I guess, first of all, we need to find out who's going. I'm going, I'm registered already. Are any of the other councilmembers found ongoing?
I don't think I have any money.
I won't be available, I'll be out of town at the time.
Okay, Andrew?
I have a presentation, so I will be there.
Right, you'll be there. Uh, Daryl, are you gonna be able to make it or not?
No, at this point, I don't believe so, so, it looks like we could nominate you to be our voting member.
I guess it's Liz and I, since we're the only two. You can do, uh, it doesn't have to be a council, it can be a staff, staff member. Okay, it's, so that we have some representation there, so your decision, what direction does council wanna go?
Do you need a nomination for you and Liz?
That's my understanding.
Second.
So, the voting rep would be, uh, Randy.
And then you as an alternate, and Liz as an alternate. We need to follow that through with a vote. Motion's been made, seconded, is there a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Call for, any further discussion? Doesn't matter whether we say no, we're the only two showing up, so, okay. All right, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
And just a couple reminders. Um, tomorrow, obviously, is National Night Out, um, council...
Um, council hopefully receives an email. Um, the- the police department is, uh, going to have a caravan to all the neighborhood meetings. It's not too late to join, just let me know, and I will let them know. Um, also, on August twelfth, there's a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, it was canceled, the meeting of August twelfth. Um, it was going to be held here in the council chambers, but it is now canceled. Um, on August thirteenth, the Planning Commission meeting will be held here in the council chambers at six-thirty. There's a Beautification Committee meeting on August twentieth in the City Hall Community Room at three-thirty, which takes us to our next city council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any other staff reports?
Jason has commented.
She commented, we've been waiting for guidelines associated with the Energy Efficiency Block Grant. As you're aware, the larger cities got direct allocation from the federal government and the smaller cities kinda got left to fight amongst themselves for money that was coming down from the state, and the state has released. They're not- still not, they haven't been adopted by the Energy Commission, but they're, what they're calling the final staff, uh, draft guidelines. And it includes a per capita allocation to the smaller cities, so we don't- it's not a competitive process, which will be good. Looks like there's gonna be actually two pots. One will be a per capita, a combination of per capita and unemployment rate calculation, which it looks like we're gonna be eligible for about a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in energy efficiency block grant money. And there will also be a competitive, uh, process on top of that. So, um, we're waiting for them to finalize those, but right now, the good news is it looks like we're in line for a significant amount of money for that. And so we'll be coming back to the council, once the, uh, the guidelines are adopted and finalized. Coming back and presenting options as far as how we want to allocate that money for expenditure here in the city within the next month or two.
It's good news, right?
Yeah. Very good. Any other comments from council, I mean, from staff, none? Uh, Vice Mayor Payne?
I would like to mention that I attended along with council member, uh, Meredith, Andrew Meredith, the grand opening of the Kaiser Trauma Center. And I- I feel like it's really important to our area to have such a fine facility. It was a- it was a nice ceremony. Um, also attended the mayor's forum on the HCP. And, um, would like to acknowledge that I had received a- an email from council member Meredith that there in fact had been an update, which was a question that came up. And I reviewed the tape and there was a presentation by the attorney for HCP in February. Um, it was a very thorough, uh, presentation, but it was directed a good deal on the East Bay Delta Water Project. Hopefully, I'm saying that right. Um, but also in reviewing the tape, I noticed that they did not address some of the concerns that we have. They said this was the first meeting of, um, I think he stated, many to come. So there is a plan for future updates, that was the first, and, uh, we'll look forward to other updates.
And he will be at council September-
Fifteenth.
What's the date again?
Fifteenth.
He who?
September the fifteenth, Rich.
The same attorney?
Yes, we're so-
Just to clarify that, because Kurt and Jason have been working with Rich, the presenter the other day, to come down with the timeframe and so forth. Okay, uh, council member Claire?
Yeah, I had mentioned last time that there was gonna be an event, uh, we're having at the Amtrak Station for a cleaner, re-engined diesel that's, uh, part of the Capital Corroirs Program. And we did have that event and introduced that upgraded piece of equipment. And, uh, tremendous, uh, reception actually by people there. And also, it's a tremendously cleaner piece of equipment. So we are hoping it'll be the template for many more of the, uh, engines to be equally upgraded to the more modern engine with some of the cleaner, uh, equipment that comes on that, so that was very good. Also, um, I've heard a variety of things come back to me about a change I've had in jobs. And I guess that's probably focused around mostly, I will be chairing the SACOG meeting this month on the twentieth. I intend at that meeting to suggest to the board that they choose someone else to serve as chairman next year instead of myself, 'cause this job's gonna require me to be out of town more. But I will, uh, be staying on the board, assuming council wants me to, as our representative. Um, I think it's in SACOG's best interest to have someone who's fairly close to both the office of SACOG and the Capitol on short notice. And as you know, for the last seventeen years, I've telecommuted from home, which I'm gonna continue to do. But I won't be at home as many days a week as I have in the past, where I can just get up there quickly. So that'll be my recommendation to the board. I assume they will accept my recommendation. Um, I've already had this discussion with the executive director and the current chair. I will serve out this year as vice chair if they want me to, or I've also volunteered to step aside if it makes it easier for someone to, uh, get up to speed. So, but I'll stay on, I'll stay on the committees I'm on currently. And I'll let you know what they decide at the meeting on the twentieth.
Thank you. Council member Haynes?
Yeah, um, I usually go over a police report. One of the things that really stood out to me is, there's a hundred and sixty-seven parking citations, and wi- of which, uh, CAPS wrote a hundred and forty-six of them. And a citizen's assisting police services, that's just outstanding, but it also shows you the amount of resources we saved by using CAPS, which is a volunteer, uh, of our seniors. I mean, to me, that's just outstanding. So, we are really using our resources very efficiently, and I'm very glad to see that, uh, uh, how much of a benefit they really are. We've always known all along, but I like to see those numbers, it really is beneficial. Um, I along with, uh, Jason Berman, the Assistant City Manager, met with Mr. Gutrich regarding the Delta Greens Project. We spent some time discussing the issues, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Gutrich, uh, sitting down and going over his, uh, his, uh, concerns. In addition to it, on Sunday or Saturday, I went over to the, uh, a night in Italy, uh, put on by the Historical Society. Um, I had a great time. Anybody who's not done that, I would recommend that sure you do go. Uh, it was very nice, the food was outstanding. Jason, you were there, you probably thought it was, it was really good. And, um, I would like to make one suggestion, and it's in addition to what I- my comments. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, if you could, on the mayor's forums in the future, I know that it's really hard sometimes, but if we could get those times at a later time, 'cause two-thirty's really hard for somebody like me who works. So when your forums are during the day like that, if it's all possible, if you can get them later, I would make more of an attempt to go to those, just FYI.
Well, since you brought that up, uh, let me voice my opinion as the mayor. When I brought the mayor's forum back, uh, we all discussed that, and, uh, we agreed that we would have one council member and the mayor to sit with appropriate staff, and it would be Ted and or Jason. And we would sit with appropriate builders and developers. The meeting was not intended to have full council there. That's why we have them sometimes in the morning at ten o'clock or two o'clock in the afternoon. If council chooses to want to attend the mayor's development forums, then I will seek another avenue. Because I know on special occasions like this is fine, because the one we had the other day, and we had two council members, and Andrew showed up.
Right.
But it was intended to just deliver that information directly to the developers with, uh, him to announce that it's, you know, that item's coming back to council. So, uh, I plan on still having the mayor's forums, but it's, uh, basically an invitation only. So, I mean, we may have a difference of opinion.
Isn't invited, or just for you and the developers?
No, it's-
Is that what I'm understanding?
No, it's mainly for, it is when you have, uh, the intent was if we're going to have all the council members, then let's just move it. We'll have another meeting, we'll have special meetings, I don't be here.
Okay, my intention's not to meet at all of them, I'm just saying that I'd like to attend some of them at some point in time, um-
And my- then my recommendation would be, if I can just interject one other item, is council to decide that you guys, if you wanna do it, then we'll just, instead of me having the mayor's forum, where we just have a few people and the developers, that we have a special meeting.
Uh, I'm a little- I know you're mentioning that the, uh, the mayor's forum from last week was a, uh, an invitation?
Invitation only?
Invitation only.
Because it was, it was, it's specifically designed for the builders and the developers. You know, I can't-
Meeting last week, if I can interject for a second?
Sure.
The meeting last week was posted as a public meeting.
And the reason it was, because I was advised by legal counsel that there was going to be possibly four council members there.
And I think a lot of the, the motive behind that was the fact that it was a meeting that involves an update on-
On that one item.
Something that, that all of us on the council would benefit from getting information on, so. I think in the future, if, if something like that comes up where it would be beneficial to the entire council, I would rather that, that we try to schedule that individual to come back and brief all of us, rather than come-
Right.
And brief a forum of developers at two-thirty in the afternoon.
And I agree, because I, I think what I'm getting from, from you council members is that it's a special item. I would rather you say, "Hey, mayor, let's do this on a special meeting," or "Let's do, uh, you know, a town hall meeting where we invite everyone." But the intent, again, for the, it was for the developers and the builders, and no decisions were being made, it's just a, an avenue. I don't know if you guys remember, I said, "Well, I'd like for one other council member," and I think Barbara was the only one that stepped forward because she was on it before. So, I wanna still try to run it that way. I think we all agree, it's special occasions happen, so, okay.
I'm done.
Go ahead.
Okay, back in the, uh, month of July, I attended the Galt Community Crusade, which was hosted by Galt First Baptist Church. Uh, the pastor of First Baptist Church invited all the other, uh, church leaders from the community. Unfortunately, only the, uh, the pastor from the Family Life Church attended, along with the pastor of First Baptist. I was, uh, very proud of our police chief for showing up at that event that morning. It was a great show of support from the city. As Barbara mentioned, last week, I attended the Kaiser Trauma Center grand opening. Kaiser has really stepped up, uh, for the South Sacramento County region. They've invested over three hundred million dollars into their facility. Those, uh, improvements go well beyond the Trauma Center upgrades. They're, they're improving the entire facility with parking, as many of you are aware, as well as the new medical office building that'll house, uh, Women's and Children's Center. Also attended the mayor's development forum last week. Kinda disappointed that there were members in the audience who chose to make it a bash session, city staff. I think Kurt did a great job handling himself, uh, just wish he would've defended himself a little bit better. Uh, I told him that after the meeting. Uh, there was a lot of allegations about the fact that the city of Galt was not kept aware of the progress of the HCP. Barbara mentioned an email that I sent out today, highlighting the fact that February third, we did get a presentation on that. And, uh, whether it was in-depth or addressed the issues that we have now, every council member was afforded the opportunity at that meeting to ask questions of the HCP. Uh, I also attended an event sponsored by Angelo Secopolis in Sacramento to welcome Drexel University to the Sacramento region. I think the addition of Drexel University is extremely beneficial to the region. It provides a, uh, an educational force for our high professional workforce in the city and in the region for development. Though I wasn't able to attend the last council meeting because I, uh, was ill, I wanted to thank Fred Gaethl, who was our representative to the Mosquito District, for his in-depth report. I watched that, that meeting via our live internet feed. And I, I think it's really great that Fred has stepped up and, uh, he's making this an interactive process with the city council. He's come to us and explained the issues that are, that are coming up. I had a question for staff, we got a pass-through memo about an outstanding balance from the Delta Greens Project, and we didn't get an update as to whether or not that was turned over to collections.
I believe a portion, if not all of that, a portion of it was paid. I don't know, uh, as of today, whether the balance was paid or not, uh-
There's no one left here from finance that can answer that question?
I don't, no.
What we will do is you'll have a staff meeting tomorrow, ask that question, give you an answer in the box.
Maybe in the future, it'd be beneficial for the entire staff to stay until the end of the meeting. I know these meetings are long, and sometimes they get redundant, but we save a lot of our questions for council comments at the end, and when staff members aren't here to answer them, we end up just carrying issues over to the next meeting, so, maybe you can take care of that, Ted, so that it doesn't come up again.
Going up and down, when they do, and then they come here all the time, and then nothing's asked, and they rebel, and then when they go, the first thing you do is you have a question and stuff like that. But we can reinstitute that.
Well, we'll, we'll try to come up with as many questions as possible, so that they feel their time is warranted. That's all I've got.
Good, but Andrew. Well, I attended the, uh, Bit of Italy too, but I had math tasking that evening, and it looked like you guys were enjoying yourself, and I did too. So I was there for about the first hour or so. Uh, just want everyone to please, uh, I know probably you will, but please support the National Night Out. I think several of the council members will probably be out, I will be, uh, visiting some areas, so, and did you have one other comment?
I, I have a comment, I wanted to thank, um, uh, Councilman Meredith reminded me, uh, the Mosquito Abatement District donated two thousand, um, off wipes to, uh, for the police department to take on their caravan to pass out to the neighborhoods who will be outside, uh, Tuesday night. So we'll be, we'll be getting those to the police department, and thanks to the Mosquito Abatement District for donating those.
Okay, now we will re-adjourn back into the closed session, we have a couple items still to discuss. Thank you. Pardon me?
All right, see you in a bit.
Okay, we'll call you right back, okay?
All right, bye.